That we'll call the the meeting to order Mahom Bay Town Council for May 28. Unfortunately, we are having some technical difficulties that is preventing us from broadcasting this event to our citizens at home, but a recorded copy of it will be available after the fact. Counsel, you have an agenda that was emailed to you. What is your wish?
So moved your worship.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor? Motions carried unanimous. Let's go to the minutes of the meeting of April 27. It was a special council meeting.
I'll move they be approved to circulate it worship.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Carver. All in favor? Motions carried. Let's go to the regular council meeting of May the 12th.
I'll move that they be accepted and circulated.
Thank you, Counselor Carver. Seconder, Counselor Feeny, all in favor? Motions carried and finally the special council meeting of May 19.
I move they be accepted as circulated.
Counselor Carver seconded by Counselor Now. All in favor? Motion is carried. We do not have any delegations or individuals, nor do we have any action items in our correspondence folder tonight. We do have a number of information items. What is your wish?
Your worship, I have a question. Do when when items are on the agenda as information items or under correspondence, do all those letters get a reply from Town Hall? Is that the regular practice?
Mr. CAO?
Well, I guess the first thing to distinguish is whether they're letters. So these are pieces of correspondence. A lot of them come in by email. So they do receive a response, but it's not typically like a letter on letterhead is typically an acknowledgement by email that we've received their email. Maureen, you're the clerk. Is that pretty accurate?
A lot of them do, but say, for example, there are several here from NSFM or we're copied on letters and that sort of thing. So.
Yeah, I guess we don't reply to the to the ones that have a mailing list of more than just us that they're going to. Yeah.
Okay.
But the ones that come clearly from individuals or from an organization, individual in an organization would get an acknowledgement of some kind that the correspondence has been received.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that it's just the acknowledgement. It doesn't. We don't. We don't respond to the substance of all of the messages.
Thank you.
Counselor Bain?
Yeah, I think that's a good point because 5.3 A, B, and C are quite interesting. C in particular almost merits either a meeting or a phone call or something to see if it's worth exploring. That would be the one from Mr. Wenzel.
I think CAO, you responded to that to Mr. Wenzel?
No, I responded to an email from from Mr. Wenzel, but as far as these things that are on council's agenda, I'll take council's direction in terms of a response. We definitely can follow up. It's just up to anybody to identify what we'd like us to do.
Well, I just identified something and it can be supported or not supportive.
I would support Counselor Bain's comment, at least what I understood to be the intent of that to that council discuss that item or those items.
Do you want me to put letter C? John, do you want me to put letter C up on the screen?
Well, I think everybody's read it. I guess my question was, has it been followed up on? I mean, we can't answer. He said he's got some very interesting things to discuss that would put us on the leading edge, words to that effect.
As I read it, yeah, no. As I read it, he was indicating that he would be reaching out to us in the near future. So.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how I understood that. And I don't know about everybody else.
Okay. I didn't think though that the letter from Ms. McDonald may maybe worthy of responding to formally to let her know about Counselor Carver's previous motion and that that's the path that the council's proceeding with on the logo issue. It's, you know, I think it's a recurring theme about, you know, I think we're comfortable with where we are and where we're heading, but it's just not clear to me that the community as a whole has been informed. And maybe the takeaway here is maybe we just do that through the mayor's newsletter to talk about what our next steps and approaches are. And whether we respond to that individual letter or we do it more in a global way using one of our normal channels, that's that might be worthy of consideration.
Okay. Any other comments? So what is the direction, Mr. Bain, that you?
Well, my just my comment was it followed up. It's kind of a very curious statement. I mean, I know the author pretty well, like everybody else does. I can phone him, you know, and ask him. I'm just very curious. And I'm also curious about A and B. He's very knowledgeable of what he's talking about. And it's just a more curious issue than a controversial issue.
Okay.
Is it? Is it something to offer the opportunity to make a presentation should he wish?
Mr. Hyde, is that something we can suggest to Mr. Wenzel that he may choose to do a presentation to council on those three issues?
Yeah.
Of his three notes?
We certainly can invite him to make a presentation if he's interested. I think he knows that that's an option, but I don't mind reiterating it. A number of the points here, though, I mean, I don't mean to speak for him, but I think they're being raised as suggestions for council with their own merits. So like, letter A makes a number of specific suggestions and they're detailed. The budgetary suggestions, which council has had this letter in possession for a while and will have it throughout the year and will these same issues will be in the budget next year as well. So, you know, I'm certainly not meaning to be dismissive. And if he'd like to come in and present, you can add to it. But I do think that the logic is expressed in the letter. And now it's just for counselors to determine in the future if they would like to act on that.
Okay.
But I guess to the substance of Counselor Bain's point, how about we give direction to staff to write back and thank Mr. Wenzel for the letters and offer to hear from him either by delegation or another type of meeting on any of the subjects if there's an interest?
Okay, Counselor Bain, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am, your honor.
Counselor Carver?
Yes, I support that. That's fine.
Do you two want to be the mover and seconder of such a motion?
Counselor Bain moves. Counselor Carver seconds. All in favor? Motions carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Wait now. We have a motion to receive and file, do we not?
I don't think we have one on the floor.
So moved your worship.
Now we do.
Here we go. Moved and seconded. All in favor? Motions carried. Let's go to staff reports. The highlight of the meeting, the staff reports.
So the first one being the staff report to council, just let me know, as always with questions, if you want me to put anything up on the screen. It's longer than ever. We've now incorporated the new amendments to the action plan and the new budget. So it gradually loses specificity towards the budget part because most of those projects are brand new. So I didn't put in a lot of notes on them. But by next meeting, you can expect most of them to have more detailed notes. But the whole thing's been updated this meeting, I think. So if there are any questions, I'll take them.
Questions? Counselor Carver?
At the very beginning, under the 6.1, the tree planting, where are the trees going to be planted? How many and where?
We have 20 new trees, sorry, that are being planted and they are all over town. There are five that have already gone in over the last couple of days, up to and including tree number 100, which was planted in memory of Mr. Burgoyne who passed last fall. And it is a crab apple tree, which will make the third in the row by the Vic, which should make a lovely entrance to town as people come in from the highway.
Are those mainly on town property, the remaining trees?
Yes, all of the trees that are still being the 20 trees that have left to go in the ground will be on town property. So that's why I say there's a they're going all over everywhere.
These were the donated, the trees that were being planted based on donations from the city.
And then 6.1 still in that report, the bylaws, what happens next with the with Uplands in terms of the moving forward with the founding review?
Yeah, happy to give a quick update on that. You'll be receiving a contact from Upland very soon. So they're putting together the presentation to a steering committee. So they're they're looking at a steering committee composed of council and the PAC. So they'd like to do a presentation to that group and then have a conversation about how the project would roll out. And then the next step from there is a large amount of public information about the project and what residents should expect.
So it'll be sort of unfolding from now?
Yeah, the session with the steering committee group, which again is the council and PAC members, is intended to lay out what to expect. And then then the public advertisement of it starts from there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? CAO, the discussion that you and I have had, and I'm, I'm going to stretch a little bit on this one because it was part of our recent budget discussions and the budget that we ultimately approved contains funding to certain organizations for one festival or another that in fact, in all likelihood, as we're seeing with other festivals already, are going to be canceled. How would we, as a council, in our budget, how will we approach that issue where we've approved money to be given to organizations to support festivals, but the festivals aren't going to happen?
Yeah, well, that really is for council to to discuss. You know, my first thought would be in general that the organizations are continuing organizations in our community. So it's things like the Founder Society and the Chamber of Commerce that we contribute to. And it's not a huge amount, but you know, the amounts. So these organizations will continue to offer the same festival and event services in the future. They're probably dealing with additional costs and difficulties. We could just give out the monies as intended and allow them to do what they would with them. Again, I think we're talking about, and I don't have it right in front of me, $1,000 to the chamber with regards to Father Christmas and 500 for the garden tour, which I don't know whether it is happening. Maybe it is. It could be. It's beautiful weather. Yeah. So so that would be one option. And then another option would be to ask the organizations what they would do with it, for example, get that feedback in before we give out money.
So is that it for that report?
I had another. Yeah, I had another question about the code red statistics. The the top item that's outlined in red in the document says households as of March 31st, households 161 and then Mater's Cove Utility 25. So I have a just question, what does that mean, the Mater's Cove Utility? I have an idea, but I'd like to be sure. And then the other one is April 30th, which is after that. And it says residential 244. So I just wanted some clarification around those numbers.
Staff are directed by council to find, to get some information about how many households because to look at how many emails and phone and text, people can be signed up for multiples or not. So staff are directed to find that. And that box that is in red is what we found. And as you say, I believe you said that was the end of March. So that's what we have. To find that information is actually quite a big deal because our provider has to go back through their own security processes and that sort of thing. There is a fee for that. We have gotten that. And that's why that has not been updated. As to your question about the difference with the Mater's Cove Utility, for someone to sign up for a code red, for the code red service, they need to be, they need to have a residence in the town of Mahom Bay. There needs to be an address that they are connected to. That means that our Mater's Cove Utility customers cannot sign themselves up automatically for code red. So what we've had to do is create a special contact group for them. So people can unfortunately, they have to ask us to be added to their, to the code red notifications. And we have obviously had some people do that. And that's why there is a distinction there.
So the other number, the residential 244, does that mean that in some households there are several contact? Explain to me the difference between the households 161 and residential 244.
So the households is telling us how many discrete addresses are connected to the code red system. Residential is how many people have clicked on residential phone. Someone may click on this is a business and this is my business phone or something like that. But the residential is telling us how many landlines are ringing in someone's house.
But then Penny's question is kind of an interesting one. There are more landlines than there are houses. So we must have some multiples somehow.
Yeah. And that would be, for example, I know someone on our staff that does not live within the boundaries of town of the town of Mahom Bay, but has signed up for 493 Main Street, which is the address of Town Hall, so that that person can get information about if the power is out or that sort of thing. And this is something that we've discussed at council as well, that someone may choose to have their house phone signed up, but maybe they're not always there. And they have their their summer residence signed up as well so that they get the phone, like they have more than one residential phone assigned to them.
We've got residents who are seasonal, probably have a number outside of the community.
Or someone has their their mom or their dad on, they have signed up for that address so they can get the phone call themselves, that sort of thing.
So the it's a number of households that I think it believes is the most important in my mind in terms of our coverage. So ideally would be aiming for 500 households. Is that correct?
That's what the council strategic plan now says too, under the action, sign up every household. And I know that for Catherine's project for the GSG data collection, because she's trying to reach every household as well, we're giving everybody the code red enrollment information while we're doing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, one last question, if you don't mind. Dylan, can you just remind council on where we are with the process of the temporary vendor bylaw? And I know it's June. I saw the new bowler I went in front of the barn yesterday and it kind of reminded me that I think that's yet to be kind of consummated. And then just wondering where we are again in that process.
Yeah, no, happy to do that. Our expectation is to have both the events, the new events and the amended essentially new vending bylaw drafts in front of council at your next meeting on June 9. And the recommendation, of course, at that time will be to schedule a public hearing, but council have to determine if there's changes you want to make first.
Fair enough. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. CAO and Ms. Clerk. Let's go to the staff report to council on the spring debenture.
So this one, I think everybody would have expected, would actually have expected a month ago if things hadn't been delayed from COVID. So the recommendation there is to essentially, it has to be, can't just be, the resolution is to pass this resolution. You actually have to do it in the in the language of the resolution. It's up to you if you want to read all of it, or if you want me to put it on the screen to facilitate. But this would be the required resolution that's attached to the staff report in order to participate in the planned debenture and then pass on the cost of this debenture to Riverport Electric Commission as a plan.
Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion if if the CEO can put that up on the screen. I did. I did inquire from the manager finance today about the interest rate and he informed me that it's premature and what the government will let us know when they bundle all of the and they aggregate all of the asks together. So we'll know down the road. But his opinion was that the interest rates will be very compelling and this is probably a good time to borrow. So nice feedback from Luke this afternoon on that point. But I'm happy to make this motion if I.
Yeah, I wanted to put it up on the screen for you here, but checking with Kelly, we're having even more technical difficulties.
It's okay. I can probably. I can probably find it here. Just a second. I might. It's weird when you're looking at the when you're looking at the agenda and you can't see everybody's faces. Okay, just one second.
Try again, Dylan.
The voice of the wilderness.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I don't know if you found it, but it's up now.
Yeah, I believe I believe I found it. This is the whereas whereas where section 91 of the municipal government act provides that municipalities authorized to borrow money subject to the approval from the Minister of Municipal Affairs, therein the minister, whereas the resolution of council to borrow for the purchase of the F550 electric utility truck was approved by the minister on the 5th of May 2020, whereas clause 91-1-B of the municipal government act authorizes the council to determine the amount and the term and the rate of the interest on each debenture, when the interest on the debenture is to be paid and where the principal and interest on the debenture are to be paid. And whereas clause 91-2 of the municipal government act states that in accordance with the municipal finance corp act, the mayor, warden, or clerk, or the person designated by the town by policy shall sell and deliver that debenture on behalf of the municipality at the price in the sum and in the manner deemed proper. Therefore, be it resolved that under the authority of section 91 of the municipal government act, the town of Mahom Bay, borrow by issue and sale the debenture a sum or sums not to be exceeding $116,642 for period not to exceed 10 years and that approved by the minister, the sum to be borrowed by the issue of sale of the debenture for the town of Mahom Bay. Pardon me, just one second. And that the mayor, the warden, the clerk, or the person designated by the town deems proper, provided that the interest rate on the debenture shall not exceed 5.5%. That the debenture be arranged by the by the Nova Scotia Municipal Finance Corp with the interest to be paid semiannually and principal payment made annually. And that this resolution remain enforced for the period not exceeding 12 months from the passage of this resolution.
I'll sit on that.
There you go.
Could you run through that again?
Let's not.
Motion's moved and seconded. All in favor? Motion is carried.
Should have added an extra zero, Mayor.
Pardon me?
We should have just added an extra zero for the all of our other issues.
Okay. So we've done that. Let's go to the amended oak door burning bylaw. This is deferred from our meeting on May the 12th. I believe it was an input from a citizen in particular that staff were going to review and look at the content of the of the proposed bylaw.
Close to that. It was input from a citizen. Council wanted to defer to have time to consider and then talk about, but staff haven't been directed to make any revisions to the bylaw yet.
Mayor, on that point, we did receive a letter from Varian Hazen on May 9 that was comprehensive and I think offered some some suggestions that will improve the bylaw. There were three areas that Mr. Hazen mentioned in his letter that I think are worthy of consideration. The first one was around the definition of an acceptable fire pit. And in his letter, he kind of denotes five or six bullet points that I think might be merit merit further consideration. Second piece was was, I think, interesting, the definition of nuisance. And his point, which I think was well made, that nuisance in the context of just this bylaw versus kind of generic nuisance in the sense of quiet enjoyment of your own personal property. I thought that was a point that might be worthy of further consideration. And the third point he made was the use of kind of consistent language in vernacular throughout the document, where in some sections we meet, we use wood burning appliance and others we use acceptable wood burning appliance. So it's a little, it's a little thing. But I do think that those three areas, when I read his note, they they struck a chord with me. I thought that those were reasonable suggestions to be evaluated. So I'd move that we direct staff to review Mr. Hazen's letter and specifically those three areas around the definition of acceptable fire pit, definition of nuance of pardon me, not nuance, the definition of nuisance, and the consistent use of language that he points out. And if staff could take a look at that, I think I would ask, we would also defer this to our next meeting on the 9th of June.
I would I would second the motion that the that staff be asked to include or review Mr. Hazen's submission for relevant material to be included in the in the bylaw, but not just those three issues, because one of another issue that he mentioned was the cross referencing to the parks bylaw. And the ambiguity about when burning is allowed in a park. So I don't want to go into the details, but there was more. I thought there was more in that letter and also in the in the other letter that was submitted to the public hearing. So I want to support the intent of Counselor Feeny's motion, but to expand it to look at both those letters for details that could be included in the new bylaw, including the question of grandfathering. I mean, what do people do with their, you know, their gadgets, their burning, get things that they have that don't quite comply? So and should that be included somehow in the bylaw?
For clarity, Counselor Carver, I just ask, you're referring to two letters. Joe, I think, was referring to the one I added with the list of numbered items that was submitted to the hearing. What's the other letter? Just so we're clear.
The other letter was also submitted to the hearing from people on Kenburn Street?
Oh, okay. Not two letters from Varian, two letters.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, just to speak to that, there are no, nothing has changed. So as far as grandfathering something, there's been no change because staff brought suggestions forward that were issues of for people to be able to know what to expect because the the current bylaw says that a fire pit can be improved. So the question then was approved by whom and what would that person be looking for? And in fact, the person that's approving the fire pit, what does the town require for that to be approved?
Well, I guess, yeah, the point about grandfathering in a situation where what we're doing is we're clarifying the definition, then you're saying, well, if it doesn't meet that current definition, then it's grandfathered in. Well, that doesn't mean it ever met any previously acceptable definition either.
Fair enough.
We I think we have to consider the the intent of making these changes. And I believe it's to make the town safer to have for people to have these fires on their property and to suggest that you're going to use a piece of equipment that is approved, but your next door neighbor, because they've had one in the ground for the last 12 years, and it's not an approved fixture, that we're going to let them keep on using it? I don't know.
If we're going to set a standard, we have to live by that standard. I know I had a I had a brick one in my backyard, but it didn't have the mesh on to it or anything like that. So I dismantled it.
So I think if it's if it's something that that would be deemed to meet the requirements, and we just talked about who would be authorized to approve that, then the fact that it's been there, it can keep on going as opposed to having an underwriter's life certification. Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
Oh, that, that's the problem we have with a lot of our policies. We make a policy and we have no way to enforce it. We don't have anybody that's a, what they call it now is a wet technician. And a wet technician, they're the ones that do all the wood burning and furnaces and things like that. We don't have anybody. I'm sure our chief of, of the fire department is not going to want to come up in my yard and tell me that I can't burn. I don't have one, but I can't burn in my fire pit. I don't think he wants to do it. So if we don't have a technician or somebody that can enforce, knows the rules, can enforce it. You know, it's a policy that's written and has it got a bone to chew on. So that's my own opinion.
So one of the biggest issues that we want to clarify is that the entire fire pit needs to be, needs to have something between it. And that is, if we look at something like a chimenea and that kind of thing, that language is in there just to assure people that that is something we're talking about. And that's, we're not, we're trying to be clear that we're not excluding that sort of thing. But one of the biggest issues we have is if someone has a fire pit in their yard, we want to be sure that they have something underneath that as well. As we've seen, the province is currently dealing with a lot of forest fires, especially over the last week. We want to be really sure that there's something underneath that fire so that it doesn't spread underground. So if it's a chimenea that someone bought 30 years ago, as long as it still has something under it, that's fine. That doesn't really become an issue. We're not getting into the specifications like, you know, the really specific stuff. We just want to make sure that it is encased so that nothing's going to spread underground. And then to the point about a mesh screen, we don't want sparks flying that will then, well, spark a fire.
I believe, I believe Mr. Hayeson's, you know, probably applauds the approach and moving forward. I think he made the point that in his definition, a fire pit is simply a dug hole in the ground was when it was initial clauses that he's asking, well, how do I get something beneath a hole in the ground? But so. Fair enough. So I think, I think those two submissions were helpful. And maybe we just amend the motion to include the submissions from, the submissions that were received by council. And to review them in the interest of, of gleaning any benefit to the, and make amendments accordingly. And we'll revisit it at the next meeting.
That's fine.
Are you okay with that councillor Kerber?
Yes, thank you.
Maureen will make that, make that prose sound a little more elegant, I'm sure. By the time it makes the minutes. You understand the theme.
While we've got this amended and when we're in discussion, I just wanted to very uncertainly, like outside of the three points that Joe had initially picked up on the park definition, as you say, Penny, it's in there. Lot of substance and things to follow up on. I, I just want to set council's expectations for the other letter, having gone back into that quick review. I, I would not take this direction, the staff to be to dig into the merits of, you know, what council short or shouldn't do, or this resident likes or doesn't like, which there's a lot more of in that letter. So while Varian confines itself to, you know, clarifying definitions and making sure the bylaw is enforceable. So I will look through both, but I, but I, I'll tell you right now, I don't think we can respond to the parts of the other letter that are mostly just values that they want council to be aware of. That's why I was submitted to the hearing.
Councillor Kerber, you had your hand up?
Uh, yes, just to ask for a recorded vote.
Okay. And one of the, one of the things that I had noted come when councillor Feeney was talking about the, the different items was the notion of nuisance. Nuisance in my yard may not be a nuisance in the deputy mayor's yard. So to try and capture that, I think would be almost impossible. To find a definite, a definition for that particular factor that would suit an across the board scenario. Anyway, we have a motion on the floor. It is a recorded vote. Councillor Bain? Deputy Mayor? I can't hear you, sorry.
Nay.
Nay. Councillor Feeney?
Yay.
Councillor Na, or Now? Councillor Kerber?
Yes. It was hard to tell the difference between the a's and the nays.
Yeah. Richard could repeat if we all stop talking for a sec. Maureen, did you need Richard to repeat that? It looked like.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm yes. So what, what is the count, madam?
Five to one.
Five to one in favor.
Five to one? There's only six of us here tonight. Councillor O'Neill is not with us. Okay. All right. Motion's carried. Let's go. So we'll have that back at, do you think at the next meeting, clerk or the one after?
Well, we, we'll just have to dig into that. We'll certainly let you know.
Unfortunately.
A park bylaw, one might necessitate us taking a deeper look into that as well, so.
And the fire councillor now as the fire chief, you can jump in on this, but if the province says there is a burning ban, it doesn't matter what our bylaw says. You don't burn.
Exactly. It doesn't matter where you are in the province, you do not burn.
Okay.
Or what, it doesn't even matter what type of device you have. There's no burning at all, whether it's a cherya, whatever it is.
Okay.
None.
I, I was watching some comments on social media and people were expressing some confusion because they've always burned in their, their yard sort of thing, but the province was saying there's a burn ban. The province takes precedent, the burn ban takes precedent. Okay. Alrighty. Uh, next we have 6.4 staff report on the amended council policy.
So this one is a, I guess a reaction to changing times. Obviously, we are in an unusual situation in terms of our council meetings where as a result of COVID, we've been meeting remotely. And right now we're doing so with a special exemption granted to all municipalities by the minister. That exception does remain in place and essentially it allows a very, very low standard in terms of, of streaming or making recordings available. So we're exceeding it quite substantially right now. And, and what we're looking at is at a time when that restriction might come off. And what other restrictions in terms of social distancing and gathering limits and other things may still be in place. Or, or in the future and other events like this current COVID situation. We've learned some lessons. We, we've developed, tonight seems to be an exception, some new capacities in terms of live streaming. And I think that we've also realized that there's a significant amount of public interest in attending this way. So a lot of the discussions within NSFM and around the province and in talking to other municipalities right now. Essentially, the answer has always been from the province that the MGA doesn't place specific restrictions on remote participation. But it does play specific requirements in terms of the transparency and accessibility to meetings. So if you can meet those, then you're in compliance. And if you can't meet those, then you're not. And the province certainly isn't going to tell you whether you're meeting. So right now there's been a lot of effort to look at best practices around the province and what we can do in terms of access and ensuring that the public have, that we're meeting the MGA's requirements in the event that those requirements are returned. So to make a long story short, there is a scenario where the council is allowed to and, and required to comply with the MGA again in terms of meetings. But where we are still under social distancing and we may be under a gathering limit of 10 or less people. How could we accommodate that? We could either accommodate it by continuing to meet in this format with live streaming. And, and essentially taking the opinion that that is the highest level of access that can reasonably be provided in accordance with the MGA at this time. Or alternatively, we could set up to meet, say in the Legion Hall as we've done. But if members of the public or members of council were participating remotely, would be required to, to adhere to gathering limits. So we could have a scenario where we go into the Legion, go to all the effort to set it up. We socially distance ourselves around the room. But we can't let anyone in the building anyway, because we're not allowed to. At which point we're putting out a lower quality video recording and going through an awful lot of effort to do so as compared to this format. So the question then becomes, could we adequately provide the best quality experience? And then there's the other issue where, you know, a member of council may be immun compromised or have other reasons why they couldn't attend. And allowing that member to attend a meeting, which otherwise, you know, at any time outside of COVID or for whatever reason, might be taking place. Because of the way that the meeting is captured and the way that the participation is captured and the public are able to see it. We're at a place where I think that we can satisfy the requirement for participation in voting. So all that's to say, the recommendation is to change our policy to accommodate those scenarios. And you can look at the wording as to how we're suggesting that. But council would have to determine as restrictions are lifted, even if we make these changes, what we would actually be prepared to do and in what scenario to return to a meeting format that, you know, allows for maximum public access.
Okay. Comments? C O and, and I'm, I'm looking at the, the recommended adjustments to the current policy. And I'm looking at the situation that says if you're participating electronically, the individual is counted towards quorum. This is, I suppose, if you had the whole group or if you had one person, they would count towards quorum. And that would include casting the deciding vote in the event of a tie. And it goes on to say, which it says now, if communications is lost during the meeting and cannot be reconnected, the minute shall reflect when the council member left the meeting. So if by my leaving the meeting, it left us with six councillors in the meeting. And the vote was taken and it ended up as a tie. I'm not there. I can't vote to break the tie. So the motion is taken as a no. Right? We also have a situation where in order for an item to come back to council again, there has to be a significant change or significant new information on the issue has become available. What I'm suggesting is there could be a motion that would have been passed if the technology had not failed. Does that mean we're not going to be able to address the same motion at the next meeting when we're all face to face?
I guess my way of answering that would be that, I think you're right. There is a scenario there where a member's inability to participate changes a possible outcome of a vote. But I don't think that that is unique to remote participation. Obviously the hazard of will you have the strong enough connection? Will your connection drop? We have any issues? That's on the member, it's on the individual. But we currently are meeting with six members of council. You know, there, there are occasions where a member isn't able to participate and votes are still taken and they still have the same strength. So what we often do as a council by convention is say, somebody's not here and, and we know that the vote is of particular significance, maybe we'll defer it. And I would suggest that that's still, you know, the rest of council has that option. But I would treat it just like any other situation where a member is, is not present.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I think there's a moat councillor Kerber? You're on you.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to click on the wrong thing. I'm just a little confused by that, that change because I had always understood that to, to be in the context of some external rule that we had to be following. So what, what enabled that change?
Well, that's what I was outlining at the beginning is, you know, essentially the MGA doesn't say that we can't moat with, we, we can't meet with remote facilities. It just doesn't say that we can.
Okay, so that was our decision.
So the province has always said, you've got to get your own legal opinion. If you make a decision in a council meeting using remote facilities, that council meeting's decision were challenged, you would have to be able to stand on legal grounds to say that you had done everything to adhere to the MGA. And so when we make a decision to, to allow for a meeting, the whole meeting to take place remotely, I think that's the bigger situation. It needs to be because there wouldn't have been any improvement to public access in, in another scenario. And so I think gathering limits are a good explanation where that might be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Mahom Bay actually sponsored a resolution at NSFM a number of years ago to have that change to the MGA. And it was voted down at the time by the membership that were present. And a couple of different mayors commented after the fact, we do it anyway. And they know that we're doing it and they're not coming after us. So that's when we started to look at the whole process.
And even now, I would suggest that we do look at it very sparingly on a case by case basis. And if we have a public hearing, you know, I currently, because we're protected by the minister's order, it's not an issue. But a public hearing, we may need to find a type of arrangement. I don't know if it's standing out in a soccer field, where we can actually allow the public to come out. Say like we had with the development agreement approval. That is one situation where we wouldn't want to, to, to create a potential for challenge, I think, even if we're sure that we would win it.
And, and to upgrade our technology and our capacities to use it. Because it does become more inclusive, it becomes easier to use and it becomes more effective.
So you mentioned that there was a recommendation, but actually where this is a policy change, the recommendation is that for our next meeting, we would, we would proceed with the change to the policy.
Okay.
So we'll have that on the agenda for June 9th is the, the procedure.
Any other comments on that piece? Okay. Let's go with 6.5, the staff report on property tax financing.
So here we have another new, even longer policy. This one is the Mahom Bay amended version of the model policy developed for property tax financing by the NSFM and AMA Nova Scotia.
And C O, if I, if I could, the province came out with their policy, the CAOs, I believe as a group looked at it. And now each individual municipality is considering their own, you know, nuanced application of the policy.
Yes, that's correct. And the difference is between these different policies that you'll be seeing around the province, there are a number of areas that are different. Some are different just because the municipal unit is different. So the interest rate being charged is typically going to be the interest rate you would normally charge. The billing dates are your billing dates. But there are some points here which are, which I've, you know, Luke and I have put in this draft that are arbitrary and that we do want to make sure the council understands that, that these are at our discretion. A couple of them, and it's particularly around the proof required for applicants. We're, we are trying to coordinate somewhat behind the scenes between different units in the county. Looking at maybe having some similar standards. So my understanding is this is generally reflective. And by this, I mean the prescription to have specific evidence of participation in federal COVID relief programs is the general kind of direction that I think everyone is, is headed. But there are parts of the province where essentially the municipal staff are going to have to consider financial statements and people's QuickBooks accounting and dig into whether they're making a case that they just happen to have less money. As opposed to that they've specifically accessed a federal relief program. And I think it's an administrative challenge that we couldn't take on. I'm also not confident that it would be accurate in terms of ensuring that it, that the relief would reach the right parties. So this suggestion of you must have participated in a federal COVID program. And it's different depending on the residential or commercial. That's the suggestion from staff, but happy to discuss further. You and I, even looking at the draft, you had a couple of other COVID relief programs that you mentioned that maybe somebody would have accessed and we don't want to be too prescriptive in, in saying only these three programs. And then potentially leaving out someone else. So that is one thing that I think we should talk about, but there may be others.
Yeah. I think, you know, we had talked about issues around the. Yeah, I think, you know, we had talked about issues around the SERB programs that are specific to students. Now, there may be a student who is not getting to SERB. Getting the student version, but they could in fact be a property owner who may be adversely affected. And so I think we had talked about really any SERB based program to assist someone who were financially disaffected by the COVID-19 restrictions.
Yeah, I think with the residential qualification there, instead of saying access SERB specifically, we could amend that to say proof of having access to federal program set up to provide relief for COVID-19 or something that is prescriptive enough that it doesn't just mean that you're on EI or, you know, something that you could be on otherwise, but that that it doesn't restrict us if even maybe the federal government drops a new program next week that that somebody could be eligible for. And that's the residential side. And then the commercial side. You could do the same approach. We're saying if the business has access to federal program and not be so prescriptive with the two programs that I had listed.
Counselor Cur.
Yes, for the residential section, an owner of a residential property, that is the owner's primary residence. I'm just curious about the snowbird phenomenon, which tends to be six months, six months. How does that work in that situation?
They would be excluded and that is the the model by law suggestion. I know that there are some units that have considered not excluding them. And there's two different areas there that are being targeted. One is the snowbirds, the other is tenant properties. So this excludes your your second property that may be an income property. And that's an intentional exclusion, as is the the seasonal resident. But we could either allow one or both to be eligible. It becomes very complicated with the with the tenant property demonstrating why you can't pay the taxes on that property based on your income, because of course you're not the one paying for that property.
You know, Mayor, I think, you know, I think the the program, I think we'd applaud the rationale behind the effort to roll it out. I mean, it was rolled out in, you know, they started working hard on this, you know, in mid-March. Things were pretty bleak. And the program really fundamentally is about cash flow for municipalities in the event that some very significant revenue source evaporates. So it's really getting you through the interim financing of a major receivable that doesn't show up. At least, you know, in some municipalities have a huge weighting to just one or two major commercial players. We're fortunate to have a more, I would think, diversified cat space. And I mean, Dylan would know a lot more about this than I would, but as well, like our relative weighting of our commercial base relative to our residential base is is probably even more modest than other municipal units. Probably, you know, significantly different than, say, Bridgewater or even Lunenburg, for example, which would have a much higher relative weighting of of commercial versus residential. So I think it's always been acknowledged from by people who have been paying attention to this particular program that it's very, very administratively burdensome. So to the degree that we could have, we could have an outlier, we may have to, you know, someone who may want to avail themselves of the program, like maybe that would happen. But my sense of things is that councils' earlier action to waive and defer interest on and and defer payments and as well the support, the council has already ratified around the use of utility to support businesses in their cash flow crisis during these times. I think well, those two things, I think, will be much more, you know, of a positive benefit for homeowners and business units. So we'll see Dylan, but I hope you're, I hope, I think to your point, like this is administratively cumbersome and and maybe not material enough that you'll ever actually need it. But in, you know, for our for our uses, I can't really see a lot of participation. But let's hope we don't need it, but it's nice to know that you have in your back pocket just in case.
Well, yeah, the idea with this one is that, you know, if council approves that we put out and say publicly, you have until July 31st to come to us and demonstrate you need to access this program. And then we'd have a total amount of money. And as you say, it might be a very insignificant amount, maybe we wouldn't even go to MFC for it. But if it was a significant amount, you know, it's significant enough to warrant the 1.1% interest, we'd go and we'd borrow it and then residents would just cover those payments. And I think there is an important reference, though, that you made to the relief that we provided right away on interest charges. And we do need to consider when that would end. So I would suggest that that would probably come to an end at the same date, the July 31st date, at least with respect to taxes, that this program would kick in so as to make it clear to people that if you if you are going to have difficulty, once we resume charging interest on taxes, then this is the program that you should be availing yourself of. So council may want to consider, do we let that go any longer? That the interest holiday and the note not doing tax sales. We could say that we don't do a tax sale at all this year. But again, like this program is intended to be an alternative to that.
Right.
And with the interest on the utilities, which this program doesn't take into account, and so we still have an issue. Staff are going to recommend resuming disconnections at some point because we don't want to resume them at such a time of year where all of a sudden you get a statement saying, we haven't paid for six months. And if you don't pay by the end of the month, we're cutting you off and it's December. So ideally, we we resume those notices sooner and actually say to residents, if you are going to have trouble with the accumulated bill that you might have accumulated, that we will work with the arrangements with you for the rest of this fiscal so that we can set up a payment arrangement to get you back on track by the end of the year. But those are just some things that I think we're considering. Because as you say, those those measures have been helped, but we don't want to create. And I just got a notice from Bell, topically saying the same thing to me, said, you know, if you didn't pay your bill for a while, we're happy to let you know that we're taking arrangements now because they know that pretty soon they're going to start disconnecting all kinds of people for nonpayments. So I'm only behind on one month and I'll pay them. But I think for some people, this is going to be quite a challenge when when all their bills start coming due again.
If you tell citizens that this grace period, for one of another name, is going to end on 31 July, then the person's utility bill would become due on the 31st of August. And I'm only thinking about the the suggestion that the second wave is going to hit September, October. You know, if if the second wave hit, if you look at the Spanish flu, the second wave was 10 times worse than the first wave. If we had, unfortunately, another situation, would we stop it again? And then start it? And when the third wave comes, we'll stop it and we'll start it? I I'm just.
There's a good question. And if you let it go for the entire year, then you're going to have to think about the arrangements that people are going to be making in the following fiscal, because we're going to end the year with a whole bunch of receivables that we have not collected.
I think that that, I think that you're right, Dylan, that there will be, there will come a time where where council would have to, you know, make that decision to, you know, walk back those two. I think those two appropriate policy decisions that were made in March or in April, before we would, I think, make that decision to pull them back, we probably, it would be helpful, the council probably would have a good idea of exactly what the receivable position was of the utility and how out of line it is with where we are normally.
So Luke's doing a monthly reconciliation on that, so we'll we'll have another update for you guys soon.
Just to see, just to see that, like the the net of, so essentially, if you think about the analogy of our, you know, our tax forgiveness through our, through some of our other plans, essentially, that's what we're doing through the utility. You're forgiving, you're forgiving interest that would otherwise be due from the client, from the customer. So so that, so you think, Jeff Dylan, that that'll be a topic for our July council meeting?
Yeah, well, either later this month or in July, we'll make some recommendations. And in part, it would be, I think it would be timed around the adoption of this in terms of the tax side of it anyway. And we've, I just want to know, we've said from the beginning with the NSFM that the utilities are a significant part of people's bills and that, you know, not having that included could be quite challenging. And the NSFM, I think for reasons, because not all the municipal units have an equal stake with utilities, they just didn't get into that side of things. So so the utilities were really more at our discretion when that being the only form of relief will come off. But I think, yeah, because of the upcoming property tax relief, we'll be talking about it within the next month.
I noticed this week that Nova Scotia Power announced that they are resuming live meter reading sometime soon. I'm just wondering, will our next round of, will our next round of of bills be based on meter reading or kind of the prorated analysis that we were forced to do because of COVID?
No, we're we're following suit with Nova Scotia Power. So our meter reads the next round will be done manually. And we're putting notices out just to remind people that you may see the meter readers. They are going to be observing proper practices and social distancing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? So this item will come back on our agenda on June the 9th?
Yes, it will automatically because it's a policy. But do you want me to make? You know, we talked about changing the language to be sort of the nonspecific federal program intended for the relief of COVID. And then you and I had another conversation about what if you're a business owner who would, you know, maybe even have a property that's combined residential, commercial? You're applying for commercial and you qualify because you've received payroll rebate or you've received the grant, but perhaps because you're sole proprietor, you haven't received any direct assistance, like SERB as a residential, as an individual. Would we allow the business qualifier? So if you're a business owner and you prove that your income's dependent on that business and your business is accessing COVID relief, would that be grounds for your residential taxes to be able to be eligible under this program? And I think that's another question that I'd just like to get clarified now. And maybe we could have direction to me to to revise or not revise on either of these bases. He is just because that way council would be free to actually, you know, pass the policy if you want to, rather than waiting another month.
We also, we also talked about the individual who had the shop downstairs and the property upstairs. Where they lived, how would that affect?
Yeah, and that's it would still have to be, it would still have to be your primary residence. So it would only be a case where your your primary residence is in town and your evidence that you deserve to be able to be eligible on your primary residence taxes is that you're a business operator, whether that's in town or otherwise, and that your business has availed itself of federal relief programs.
SERB type programs.
And that's what we're hearing from the chambers, that there are business owners who can't access any individual programs.
Anyone have a comment?
Well, I have a comment. There's two grants out for businesses, small businesses from the federal government. So, you know, maybe they should look into that and get that money. Because I have a family member who has a small business and they received two grants from the federal government. It's not going to pay all the bills, but it certainly helps.
No, it's a lot better than what we're offering because what we're talking about here, just anybody watching is a loan, it's not a grant.
Yeah, we're not giving this to people. The provincial government is underwriting the loan, if you will. Joseph?
No, I think you made the point, Mayor. It's just, it's just a financing auction to get people through cash flow crunches.
CAO, suffice it to say that we will take every possible opportunity to provide the assistance as defined for people who are in receipt of some kind of a federal government assistance program?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to clarify on, so what I'd like to have, if we're going to amend it on this basis, just to be really clear that we did follow our procedures around the policy being in the package as as it was amended. If somebody could make a motion to say, direct the CAO to amend the draft policy to reflect the eligibility criteria that the individual has accessed any federal COVID-specific federal relief program for their residence or business. And that way I can just change the draft and then you could still have the conversation about whether that's what you want to do.
Somebody want to make that motion? Deputy Mayor seconded by Counselor Feeny on the question.
Thank you.
Motion's carried. Okay. We're off to the races. The draft transportation plan, 6.6.
Yeah, so this follows up on the last meeting where we had a presentation from Emmanuel with CBCL. Essentially, two areas here. One is what we might do to follow up on our opportunity to do some transportation work, capital work this summer, applying for external funding and getting some work done on projects that are of interest to the council. And then the other one is try to move towards the adoption of a final version of the transportation plan and additional public consultation. So I have three recommendations there, but only two of them are phrased as motions. The first one was that council, consider which transportation plan options may be acceptable to the council moving forward this year because we did have that placeholder project in our budget. It's not a, it's not a motion, as I understand, council might choose to discuss that at length tonight or at another time. But it does lead into those two motions. So one is to set a date for a public hearing on the transportation plan. As I understand, it'd be council's desire to hear more public views before adopting it. But the other one is with respect to one of the options presented there, which is the reconfiguration of the intersection of Edgewater and Main. We had a communication from the Legion indicating their willingness to to get into discussion on that. And so essentially, if council thought that we would prepare to do either engineering or physical work on, say, Clearway and Main intersection or the reconfiguration of the Senetaph or the one-way street request to an Orchard Street or any number of other projects, moving forward with the feasibility of it, refining engineering stuff, anything I could do in the meantime would be helpful because, as evidenced in the in the report, there is some provincial funding that's available, that's available right now. So it's just a matter of our deciding, you know, what projects and if we have enough information to apply for anything. So that's what's in there. Happy to take questions and there are two suggestive motions.
Counselor Cur.
Thank you. At the Age Friend Committee meeting on Monday, there was interest and wish to, that the committee have an opportunity to have input into the discussion before the the public hearing. So there was a discussion about choosing a different date other than the 25th for that.
And the next available council meeting on July 14th was the day that we had, it was talked about at AFC, I think.
Yeah, so that would give an opportunity for all committees to look at the transportation plan and and provide some input. If that's acceptable to look at that date rather than June 25th.
Well, do you want to, that that down there is a motion, so it's just a matter of making the, whoever makes the motion, putting that date in it instead of the other day.
Okay, before before getting to that, I'm a little bit concerned about council beginning to make decisions on the the list of items that we've been given prior to the public hearing. The optics are poor to do that.
Well, that's why it's down there, not as a as a recommendation for a motion, so no, no decisions. But if council has say, oh, I'm wondering about this, but I'd like more information type of questions, including us following up with the Legion, we could do that in order to be better able to move when council does have it.
Well, and then there's another issue about the Senetaph. And I see Counselor Feeny has his hand up to speak to to this because the Heritage Advisory Committee, so I'll I'll yield to Counselor Feeny for the Heritage Advisory Committee take.
So Mayor Field, so I'm a bit worried about where we are with this process. I take the package that was well crafted and we had a solid rapport from CBCL. But when I look at their package, I look at it as an engineering engagement. We ask them to come in and review the town's transportation corridors, craft a a package of of information and some ideas based on their subject matter expertise and their engineering expertise. And what they've come back to us is kind of some analysis about and some ideas of things we could contemplate. Like, I do not take that document as the Mahombe. Like I do not take that document as the Mahombe transportation plan. I just take it as this is just a report like any other report the council receives. We take it and we review it. And out of that, there might be some elements of it that we, we are very strongly supportive of. But there's quite frankly, many, many elements of it that I think there's little or no community support for. And I'm worried that if we take, if we take this document in its current format and we start having community meetings on it, we're going to burn an immense amount of time and energy. Shooting down elements of this package that we're never going to support anyway. And what I propose, you know, whether it's the Senate half issue of which I think there will be strong community opposition to moving it. And I think in, and I think that, um, I know personally I have very significant reservations and would, uh, would be opposed to moving it, but we'll see where that ends up over time. I would prefer that we as council get together in a special meeting available to the community. Review the package together collaboratively. Have members of the, that can participate, members of the community participate. And we would review it and we would, we would be able to prioritize the five or six or seven items that we all could get our heads around moving forward together that we, we had unanimous support. So that Dylan can still take advantage of those things within the funding formulas. But we, we start to rule out the things that have zero chance of ever seeing the light of day, like paving over the, paving over the, the swamp pond, for example. The energy level that will get consumed by relitigating things that there's no, that were just theoretical ideas by the engineering team that I think we have to applaud. Like that's why we hire those folks. We hire those folks to come up with ideas that we wouldn't come up with ourselves. We hire them to give us a, a different perspective, a different point of view. But that isn't the plan, that isn't a plan. And I, I, I'm worried that there, that there are members of the community that think that the council, this is our plan that we're, we're trying to get ratified. We just are going to and I, I just don't think we're there yet. I think that this is just a consultation document from a, a paid vendor. And we'll, we should take that in-house and then we should figure out what pieces of that that we're willing to call the plan. Uh, and then we would take that to the community after we ruled out things that I think based on our, the collective wisdom around the table. Anyway, that's, those are my thoughts.
CAO?
Oh, well, I, I find it very refreshing to hear it. I mean, I, I just want to mention that, you know, with my recommendation around the hearing, it comes from what I've been told now for five meetings. We can't talk about the substance of these items until we've had a hearing. So, uh, you know, I'd, I'd love for council to be willing to talk about all these items and just talk about the ones we'd like to move forward with. And, you know, I honestly, I mean, obviously hear from everybody else. I think the approach of having a meeting where council goes through and says, what would we do this year? And then just discussing whether those items need to be submitted to public consultation. From CBCL's angle, their recommendation at the end of this document, even though it is phrased as the transportation plan. I mean, to Counselor Feeny's point, their recommendation is give this to your asset management committee and use these items and, and ideas as a basis to work towards a plan. So they're not even presenting this as a comprehensive plan. In that sense, um, you know, it, it, it is valuable. If we said, let's change this title to the transportation planning report. Instead of the transportation plan, we'd have a valuable document and people wouldn't misconstrue it. And council could approve that, you know, we, we approve the receipt of this document from CBCL. I think the key thing is the council and the committee, uh, the asset management committee take these items, the short-term ones to council, the longer-term ones to asset management committee, and then talk about what we could do with them. So I just want to say, I, I don't mean to make it a lengthy public process because I see a risk there. But I'm responding to that concern that I really think council needs to be able to discuss some of these items that were specific responses to specific needs in the community. And we've gotten bogged down on the expectation that we need the public consultation before we can talk about them. So I, I like.
Counselor Carver's next.
Uh, yes, I totally support Counselor Feeny's, uh, comments and, uh, Dylan. So the opportunity to discuss it and winnow out things that are totally, you know, beyond the pale. And they, they, and they in fact had already gotten rid of the paving, the, the, the water gardens.
Yeah, that's the thing. We don't have to remove it from their report. We just have to not put it on our capital plan.
I just wanted to go back to the, the Senate half. Because at, at the Heritage Advisory Committee, we began talking about, um, some of the things like the water garden area and the Senate half, which might in fact be considered to have heritage value. And the Senate, when we began looking at the Senate half, it wasn't clear who actually owns it. So that, that was a kind of an interesting piece.
Okay, Counselor Bain is next and then Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, my comment is we have said some time ago, there's a lot of very inexpensive things we can do that were very high on the list, like a few stop signs, one-way street, that sort of thing. And the whole process gets so protracted, it must be very discouraging for the citizens. When, uh, they've heard this, they've mentioned it over the years. And I just think that the sooner we can get on with some of the priorities and the more simpler things, I think we should, uh, get on with it as soon as we can, however we can.
Deputy Mayor?
Just going to be quick. Let's do this meeting in the council. Cause there's a lot of people out there think what they wrote down, it's in the plan, it's going to get done this year. And that's part of our trouble. We go too quick. And we don't know what's going on. And they all think, you know, people close to aquatic gardens went berserk. Where you're going to make a parking lot. I mean, you know, just because somebody in South Maine suggested that, it's on the list. So I mean, let's have a meeting quick and let's not be just.
Okay. That was one of the things on, that was, went around on, on the social media when the report was first coming out. And that was one of the points that we made then. That this was just their vision or their version of what they saw as potential opportunities for the town. It is not our plan at this point.
But that's what the citizens thought.
Right.
That's our plan. So I mean, let's, we got to keep some of this stuff, do it ourselves. Then present what we plan to do this year. We run into the public as soon as, oh, we might have a plan, let's get the public in on this. I agree, I'm all for public. But let's get our plan, we present it to the public.
Okay.
There's just so much going on out there.
Counselor Now has his hand up next.
Yeah, I totally agree that we have to get moving on it and decide what we want. Because there is a lot of perception of there in the public eye that this is the plan. This is what's going to happen and it's going to happen soon. So I think the sooner we get moving on to it and let them know that, hey, we have a plan now, we take it to the public, I think the sooner the better.
Okay, Counselor Carver?
Yeah, and I think it's really worth, uh, going through that in the mayor's newsletter. That, uh, the distinction between a plan and some ideas.
If I could just say, let's, um, let's consider the motion for a special meeting, like maybe we have a motion tonight to direct staff to schedule that special meeting. And then if we can do that relatively quickly, I think we'll have time from there to think, how do we communicate? Because, you know, that discussion will really inform what we're communicating from there. So I think if, if somebody wanted to make a motion, the staff be directed to schedule a special meeting. Counselor Bain.
So move. Counselor Bain, so makes it. Counselor Carver seconds it. The date for the special PIM will be?
Um, so, so this one is going to be a special meeting of council, not a, not a public.
Of council.
So it'll be open to the public as per a regular special meeting of council, but not for participation. Yeah, we can, we can talk about dates now if people are comfortable or we can do that by email. Um, I'm good either way.
I think we can do it by email.
That, that's great, Mayor. I'm very pleased. I think this is the right decision. The, the other, the other motion around, I believe, after speaking with some of the folks at the Legion, that the letter that was presented to council at the last meeting was interpreted as, you know, full-throated support for the move, moving the Senate half. And I just think that that, that was a misread of what that document was saying. Again, I think Counselor Bain just made the point, there was a feel, there's a feeling in the community that the cake has been baked. And the plan that was presented to council, the, because it was called the plan, is, is the plan.
Okay.
And I think we have an opportunity now to reassure the community that that's not the case. And so on the item about, um, discussing the move, moving the Senate half with the, the summit, with the, um, with the Legion, I just think that, that, uh, it would be better for maybe you, um, to reach out directly to, to, to Helen. And, um, just make sure we're on the same page of what they want, because I think what they want is not what they wrote. And, um, but I think all council should do to try to do that due diligence. Because that, that's certainly the impression that I have that what they wrote is not what they want. And I think, and I was surprised, but I, I'm glad I now know exactly where they stand.
Counselor Bain?
Well, first of all, we have a motion. Second of all, I think Carol expressed exactly what I was trying to express. Is some of this stuff is going to take years of talk, other stuff we can do very quickly. So let's get on with it. The Senate half is just an excellent example of maybe it'll happen, but if it does, it'll be in five years. Thank you.
Okay, motion is on the floor. On the question, all in favor? That is a motion for, for the, um, special council meeting, wasn't it? Okay.
Yes, and, and I mean, I think that kind of obviates the other recommendations there. So we'll go with the meeting and then we'll see where we go.
Yeah, and, uh, we've got a mayor's newsletter piece coming up. We'll make that the topic of the, of the newsletter. Just to allay any concerns people might have that the document that was presented by CBCL is our bible for the next five years.
We can, I think we should try to come up with it, with a brief statement, but I do think we should caution creating the sense that this special meeting is going to be, you know, now we're, now this is the thing to put all of your focus on. So I think we need to be careful that how we, how we do that, if we're going to put something in there that we're not just, um, keeping the spirit alive, but we are reassuring people. So we all have to think of how to phrase that.
Alrighty. Are we finished with that item for now? Then let's go to beautification and streetscaping.
So we were really fortunate to, I forwarded everybody an email, get an extra month delay on this because, um, between getting our budget approved and then looking at the fact that they were quicker than ever on this program launch this year. We didn't have very long to talk about the scope of this project and, um, you know, how we would approach it, these two projects or this one project. So now we have until the end of the month. So we have this meeting and potentially a couple others. Love to hear from council. There's some recommendations there. Um, how do you want to proceed?
I think this is great news. I'm thrilled personally. I think the, the, um, I did have a, I did notice Dylan that, um, that we're going to try to replace within this scope of project of three, the lamp posts that have been, um, removed over the years. And, and I'm, believe me, I'm satisfied and that's terrific that we do three. I, I thought we actually had four that were down and maybe there's a rationale for why we're only replacing three of the four.
That may just be a typo and that would be the perfect kind of thing to catch. So they're about thirty-five hundred dollars each. Derek would say we should replace every single one that's there. But in the short term, we could absolutely do four. We just need to make sure we get the right ones. So now we have time for me to make sure I've got it right.
I was just asking the question if there was some reason why we weren't going to replace the fourth because of engineering or something.
I'm sure before applying, I would have caught it with Derek because he would know exactly, but that may just be a typo.
Okay. So.
So the recommendation to direct us to, to actually apply to the province could be deferred. There's no special rush now. We have two more meetings. But the other one, um, if we're going to do signage as a part of the wayfinding and signage project, the thought, and I guess I could just say at a high level, last year when we met with the chamber, um, when we were talking about wayfinding, the discussion was essentially that we would, um, be able to with, with, you know, relatively small amount of outside assistance define the wayfinding signage needs with the chamber. So we have some exercise with chamber members and, you know, go through, we're talking about pedestrian signage, we're talking about vehicle signage, we've got signage on the highway, we've got signage downtown, different levels of signage. And the, the, the hope was we could just go right away to saying, well, where are the gaps? Well, we don't have any pedestrian map signage. Well, we know we don't have any commercial directional signage outside of the downtown. We're getting asked from salt boxes come up. So there are some areas there. So the budget that was in the proposed budget, you would have noted in the operating initiative section said, you know, to do the strategy and signage. So the thought was that we would jump right in with some of the signage. And this is the only program that I'm aware of at the current time from any level of government that will support, um, signage. So the thought is to combine it with the Edgewater Street work because we're, we're building on that entrance to the community. You park, you see the, the signage indicating you are here and this is how you get around the community. Uh, or you don't park and you drive up the salt box and you, you know where you need to turn. So it, it relates into that same, um, streetscaping and beautification concept. But obviously we would need to reach out to the chamber. We now have a month, so actually a little bit more time to do that.
Okay, Counselor Feeny?
Counselor Carver's age-friendly, um, committee meeting earlier this week, we talked about, a lot about benches. And, um, Dylan, you were part of that as well. And, um, some of the specific recommendations about improving bench availability through the downtown corridor. I think they talked Cherry Lane through Fairmont Street. And the age-friendly committee was asked about, you know, thinking about where, where are obvious locations for that? In the context of the beautification project, Dylan, I'm not sure if you thought there is any alignment between those two initiatives or not, but, um.
Now that we have time, benches are eligible. If we wanted to do a few town finance benches, I know we're talking about donation finance, but if we wanted to do a few town finance benches, we could absolutely put that in. The committee will have one more meeting to, to have that conversation.
So I think, uh, you know, probably pass that out, that, that along to council for any other thoughts as well about where, with locations for benches in the, in the court, downtown corridor. The other item was the, this, the heritage signage that I thought was a component of the centennial program from last year, specifically designed by the bank. Is that, is that on the rails or is that something that if it fell off the rails could be put back on the rails through this program?
Uh, no, that's, that's one of the centennial things that was all funded and it's just waiting to get done. So actually we're very close to those going to the printer now. Because we have to finish the centennial signage installations by July, uh, due to the legacy program funding deadline.
Okay, great.
Okay, Counselor Carver?
So Dylan, I'm curious if, if, if we start the discussions now with the chamber about wayfinding and then how, where does the public engagement piece fit in? Because we have promised that that will be a part of the wayfinding.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't want to speak for the chamber, but my, my thought is the first question of reaching out to them is, you know, we have a strategy development process. But we have an expectation that the, at the end of that process, there's also some signage that can go in. So if we're going to apply for the signage now, it essentially sets ourselves with a timeframe of the next several months to, to do the strategy process. How does the chamber see, you know, particularly with COVID, being able to create engagement opportunities in that process? And, uh, and, and, you know, I, I would wait on council, even though we had this letter from the chamber and we budgeted for it now. I think I need council direction to reach out to the chamber to actually say the council is now saying, yes, we will do this project with you. Because we deferred their request to budget and we approved the budget, but we didn't actually say, yes, staff, do reach out to the chamber about this. So I, so I haven't done that yet.
Well, the, the reason I'm, I'm asking is because of the, the logo issue that is in the background. That is.
So I, my expectation is that the chamber will say that, you know, we need to develop a signage strategy. The signage strategy then needs to have public input on it and, and that will be, um, you know, later this summer.
Well, I think council is also saying it has to have public input.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, I just don't, I, I'd like us to have the conversation where we know what the chamber's thoughts are and I haven't asked them. So I feel like it's a little hard for me to, to speak to it.
So do you want to, you want, uh, a motion that council direct staff to contact the Mahone Bay Tourism and Chamber of Commerce to begin discussions on the wayfinding strategy development?
Yes, I think the first motion on applying to the program can wait because we have an extension, but the second one, that would help us to, to get ready for the first.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Counselor now seconds. This is the motion to direct staff to combat, uh, to contact Chamber of Commerce to begin discussion on the wayfinding strategy development. All in favor? Motion is carried? And you say you don't need a motion for the 2020 beautification?
I, I think I'll come back. I think I'll work to refine the budget a little bit, but what I'd love to get is any suggestions now or certainly by email. I understand we're getting towards the end of this meeting. Think about Edgewater Street benches, fixtures, just, you know, this project could have a few smaller streetscaping components. The one thing that I don't want to add is anything involving maintenance. So we've constructed a project where we install stuff and there's no other costs. So if you're thinking of other items, those are the items.
Okay, all right. That's the end of the staff reports. Let's go to council items, COVID-19. The province and the federal government, of course, there's, there's just so much information out there. Some of the things that came out today that there are two additional cases today, we're up to ten fifty-five. There's been fifty-nine deaths. And Northwood is the only nursing facility with active cases. There are now thirteen identified common COVID symptoms. And if you go to the province's COVID's page, coronavirus page, they list them all there and they're quite extensive. They continue to stress the notion of hand washing, social distancing, maintaining six foot from anyone not in your bubble and limit any social gathering to no more than five. You all heard last couple days ago that a lot of facilities will be opened as of the fifth of June. In particular, these are organized, these are businesses that have an overarching organization. And the province is dealing with those organizations to establish the parameters under which they will release them from the emergency health order. Playgrounds still not any indication if and when they're going to come off the list. The same thing with, uh, swimming pools with bars. Drinking areas or consumption areas associated with microbreweries are off the list on the fifth of June, but not bars. So I think the best thing for us to continue to do is to reinforce to the public that we are following the directions of the province and the emergency health order and will continue to do so. Yeah, fifty-four cases in our zone. And interestingly, what they call our zone is a line drawn across the middle of the province from the Bay of Fundy to the Atlantic Ocean. So it includes the Annapolis Valley, Yarmouth Shore, the French Shore, everything right up through almost the Hubbard's. Is part of our zone. We don't have one. That's just Mahone Bay, of course. Anyway.
Just before we move off of this item, I just a little comment. Council had approved a letter to our federal and provincial representatives concerning infrastructure funding during COVID. Back in April, we sent that letter off. And just to give an indication that it was one of many letters that was being received and being heard. At last night's NSFM provincial call, we were informed by our deputy minister for municipal affairs that we are anticipating, um, in the next, uh, couple of weeks, some announcements around, uh, federal infrastructure funding windows that will be coming up. So that's the first time we've had any movement on that in, in this year. And I'll keep council informed, so expect something to your next meeting with whatever comes out from that. But, but good to know because we were one of the units that had written specifically to, to suggest that, so.
I left the NSFM meeting last night a little early because of the MJSB meeting started at seven. Did they ever get to the point to talk about the results of the vote from the membership around the election?
That was the one thing that I couldn't stay on for either. I jumped over to MJSB after infrastructure, so I don't know whether they got to.
I don't, I don't think they did, but. We're still waiting. Okay. Let's go to item seven point two, Counselor Carver, council policy.
Thank you. Um, so I've brought this motion to council, uh, for two different reasons. One is I was concerned, uh, about seeing correspondence coming to council from individuals who weren't fully identified, particularly by their place of residence. And, uh, it's my belief that it's helpful to council to know where an individual lives, if they're writing to council and want to have our attention. The other aspect was, um, around notice of motion. And that when I read the council policy, uh, felt that it wasn't entirely clear how a notice of motion, uh, should be presented. So I developed this motion, whereas council has previously received correspondence from individuals who did not provide full name or place of residence. And whereas council needs the ability to identify whether correspondence originates with individuals who live within or outside of the town of Mahone Bay. And whereas there is a lack of clarity as to the requirements for submitting a notice of motion and any subsequent motion. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to prepare a draft amended town council policy for council's consideration. Clarifying provisions for correspondence and new business, including the requirement to provide a full name and address or place of residence with all correspondence received by council, as well as the requirements for providing notices of motion and the subsequent motion. That is my motion.
Second up motion, Mayor?
Moved and seconded. Question?
Your discussion?
Yeah.
We've been.
Suggesting that, uh, are we establishing the, the precedent that we would not respond to anyone who chooses to write to council if they don't have a Mahone Bay address?
No, 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 simply so we would know. So we would know the difference if somebody has an address in Mahone Bay or, um, in Martin's Point. It makes a difference to me to know that.
Counselor now?
Yeah, I think it does make a big difference because, uh, you know, somebody that doesn't provide their name and address, it'd be the same as getting something anonymously from somebody and how do you act on that? So I think it's very important that we have that information.
Okay.
And I'll just note, we do currently prohibit like a fully anonymous letter, but I agree with Counselor Carver that the wording around that you must have your, your, your place of residence listed or however it's phrased could be more specific and, and clearer.
And particularly if you think of the person who has a business in town but chooses to live outside of town, they're not eligible to vote in town elections. Right? It's, it's where you live that you are a citizen of, not where your business is located. So that may be an issue that we may have to give some extra consideration to. Counselor Feeny?
Yeah, I, I think it's just a logical motion and, you know, I, I think we would always respond to a letter from, from somebody who is, who deserved, you know, deserved response. I think we had some examples of that earlier this evening. But we're also, in the last four or five meetings, we've received quite a bit of correspondence that, um, is either A through email or, or just, we just, or, or even the response through a, a survey or a petition. I think it's just standard protocol that you sign your name and you have to tell folks where you're from. That, that just strikes me as a reasonable request.
Yeah, you mentioned the petition. I think out of the, the five hundred persons who signed the petition, staff identified sixty-eight of them as town citizens.
It's not so much to ask, to ask someone to, to, to just simply to know where they're from, you know?
I don't think the newspaper publishes letters to the editor unless you put your name and address on it. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Motion's carried. Let's go to committee. Thank you, Counselor Carver. Let's go to committee reports. Heritage Advisory Committee draft minutes of May thirteenth.
Uh, Mayor, we, uh, this was an item, uh, a submission from the, uh, management team at the St. James Church and specific to the rectory. They're about, uh, they'd like to, um, they'd like to repair, uh, their roof, uh, move away from the asphalt shingles they've had for, uh, decades and move to, uh, a new attractive metal roof, provided by a local contractor Walls on the way to Bridgewater. And they came to the Heritage Advisory Committee.
I know their logo.
Fair enough. So they came to the Heritage Advisory Committee, um, because as you know, they, uh, recently, um, were, uh, designated as a municipal heritage property in our town, although we haven't had the chance due to current circumstances to do the official placking, but they are, they would like to proceed with the roof. And, um, therefore, uh, the Heritage Advisory Committee recommends to council to approve the request, uh, of the St. Jane Angleton Church Council to replace their current asphalt roof with a steel roof as proposed.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Comments?
I think this is great. I think this is kind of the second or third example in the last eighteen months, twenty-four months where, uh, participants of that program have kind of followed the process. And I think it's really indicative of the level of stewardship that, uh, folks who have those designations really, um, are stepping up to. Uh, it's impressive.
Good news. All in favor? Motion's carried. All right. The asset management committee.
Oh, we didn't have any, um, motions recommended to council in there, so I don't know if you wanted to comment on it at all, but we normally just highlight the.
I, I find that the asset management, uh, the committee is still dealing with the whole process, the huge amount of information, the opportunities that were being afforded by, um, FCM and, and, uh, provincial level organizations. And I think it's, to me, it's one of these things that we're going to get to a point and it's going to roll out. And it will all be there. And I think the people who are participating on the committee are genuinely interested. And they're interested to see the process get underway in our town. C A O?
No, I think that's a great summary. And you're right, when the first recommendation from the committee will likely be the council approves about twenty pages of work that the committee and staff have been doing. So when that comes forward, then we'll have a lot more to dig into.
Yep. Okay.
What, excuse me? What are the posters, the asset posters?
So yeah, the, the posters are, uh, this goes way back to, um, project that we initially contracted Sky Sale to support us on. For each of our eight asset classes, we're developing a fact sheet and a poster. And there are two different ways of presenting the public with high-level information about the water utility, the electrical utility, et cetera.
I remember that now. Thank you.
Are, are all of these posters available?
Well, right now we, we've only done four on the committee. But, but the idea is.
Water wastewater and there's one on the electrical, I think, and.
Water and wastewater and electrical and transportation so far. And stormwater, uh, recreation, uh, and a couple others to come. So the thought will be that the committee will recommend the eight draft posters to council. And that, you know, you're kind of looking at the eight posters, the eight fact sheets and seeing how they all interrelate. And then that would be one communications piece that would be released. We do like a monthly feature. So this month we're, we're putting out information about the water utility and the next month and so forth. And while those get released, the committee is digging into the hopefully new detailed information that we're gathering from the FCM and, and, and working on those big transportation plan projects for, you know, what are we doing for transportation over the next ten years? So this first step is to get those, the high-level things out. And then we have a great package of public info that we can be releasing and bringing up public education to prepare for the next step.
Okay. Anything under new business? I don't think we didn't amend the agenda to add anything to it when we started out. Hearing none? Entertainer motion to adjourn. Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Bane. All in favor? We're out of here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.